Alright, it is Tuesday, June tenth. I'll call the order of this meeting with the Madison Board of Selectmen. First order of business would be to plug.
The contributions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and give this world liberty and justice for all.
Alright, how about an approval on the minutes from May twenty seven? One sec Rick, sorry. Before we get that far, I wasn't here, but the meeting was called the order by Rick and not me.
Oh. Oh, by Frank, alright, thank you.
We have Rick making a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second that.
Uh, I wasn't here either, so I can't. We need to wait for Jake then.
Wait for Jake.
Well, I actually had a discussion with Cordell about abstaining and doing minutes and that kinda thing. And he said that even if you weren't at the meeting and you feel comfortable that the minutes are as accurate as they could possib- you know, like, it's nothing glaring that you think is wrong with them, even though you weren't at the meeting. Um, you can still approve them even if you weren't there.
With that being the case, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't even read them at all, so I wouldn't feel allowed.
I did read them, so we have three ayes and one abstention. Alright. Approval of the manifest. Payroll thirty-five thousand, one hundred ninety dollars, eighty-one cents. Payroll liabilities ten thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. Accounts payable one hundred seventy-one thousand, ninety-foury-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Two hundred thousand in Madison Energy School. For a total of four hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. The motion to approve.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rick, second by Jim. All those in favor?
I was abstaining, as I did earlier.
I had that discussion too with Cordell. Well, 'cause our whole discussion, sorry if I can, excuse me. I was asking him about abstaining because I said, I feel like there's too many abstentions lately and anyways. If you're, if you're not comfortable with something because you don't feel like you have enough information or have the opportunity to make a decision about it, he says it's better to say no than to abstain. Because you've been elected by people to make decisions and every time you abstain, you really haven't made a decision.
Okay.
So his theory was that it's rare that you should abstain from anything.
Okay.
If you don't have enough information, like, we're buying a new truck and you don't know if it's gonna be blue or red and you really have a thing that you want it to be blue, you don't abstain from that because you don't have enough information. You say no because you don't know that it's gonna be blue. So, I, he taught me quite a bit on that, 'cause I, we had a long discussion. So anyways. And traditionally, if you abs- feel like there's something wrong with it, by abs- when you abstain from it, you're trying to take yourself out of the equation and it almost looks worse in a sense that for some reason you feel like maybe there isn't something correct with it, something wrong with it versus just, you know, saying no.
I think the opposite. By saying no, I'm declaring that I don't approve it or there's not something, that, that, that there would be something wrong. That abstain would just mean, I don't know, or I don't have enough information.
And his theory was the opposite, that you should say no if you don't feel like you have enough information. Yeah, so anyways. Like I said, we had a long discussion about abstentions. And I'm gonna try and educate everybody.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So, anyways, thank you, good.
Alright, public comment. What was yours, sir?
Uh, I'm Tino Fernandez from one oh four P. Fishtown Lane. And, uh, just wanted to bring up an issue with the, um, wooden, uh, guardrails that we have on P. Fishtown Lane. They're about, I think they're probably about sixteen years old, they were put up there. And they've sustained a lot of damage from the snow plows over the years. And I've brought some pictures so you can see them. I did, uh, leave a message with the highway department and I haven't heard back from them. But these are some of the pictures, there's about four sections of, uh, of, uh, these are all different things that have been injured, uh, up there. And they've been hit over the years, um, and damaged pretty significantly. So I think, uh, ultimately, we're gonna have to do something about these, uh, guardrails. The other issue that's occurred too is that, and this is, I think, this is gonna be a, a, a critical statement here, but I don't think the highway department is marking the e- ends of the guardrails. So when the snowplow comes by in the storm without a reflective marker, they don't know where it is. Hit the guardrail. And over the years, we've sustained several damaged guardrails. Also, they don't know necessarily where the edge of the road is and we've lost some of the edge of the road when plow has picked up, uh, some of the edges. So, out of the four sections of guardrail that are up there, three have been pretty well damaged at the end. So I just wanted to bring this up, I don't know whether it's been discussed or any time, I'm still waiting to get back from the highway department. But I think it's something that is gonna be, need to be addressed and, um, and, uh, at least cleaned up 'cause it looks pretty terrible right now.
The guardrails are they, I'm sorry.
No, we're just gonna have Linda have Josh take a look and, and get back to us and give us their input. But, go ahead.
There are metal guardrails up there, but there's wooden as well?
There are no metals, they're all wood.
Oh, that's all wood?
It's all wood, yep, even the, uh, stanchions are wood and the railings are wood. And, I mean, they have a limited lifespan, but I think they would last a little bit longer if they're not hit by snow plows every winter.
Are they like preventing, uh, from water or just steep?
Uh, there's steep runoffs on either side to prevent cars from going down in serious injury, so. Uh, and so obviously the town mandated when the road was built and the, and the development was made.
Do they have a lot of wooden guardrails?
Is there only that one section?
There, there are three, there are four sections. When you come in, there's one on the left, one on the right, and then there's a cul-de-sac and there are two sections in the cul-de-sac. So three out of the four sections have been hit by the plows and, uh, the first two coming in are the ones that are most damaged so far. Okay, that's it, well, thank you.
Seeing no other public? That will be the end of the public comment. Ref Department swim fees. We're looking to potentially hold a public hearing to adjust the swim fees to add a discount for multiple children. That's the gist of it, right? Yes, just not.
Yes.
We're just looking to add a discount for multiple children for the swim lessons.
Yes.
Okay. In order to do so, we need to have a public hearing, but in order to have the public hearing, we need to okay that we're gonna have it.
Do we need to?
Yeah, 'cause it's a fee.
We set the fees for all the others already.
Yep, so, and any fee needs a public hearing.
How many, did we, did you have the lottery yet, or there's still signs up?
No, it's still going, it will close on June fourteenth. So, I mean, there's not a whole lot of families, more than one child in a family signed up at the moment. I just kinda wanted to get ahead of it, but, um, I did have a family ask if there was a discount. And this family has three kids that are interested in signing up for swimming lessons. So, I don't know.
What kind of a deadline are we looking at? Now, right?
Well, no, I mean, swimming lessons doesn't, it doesn't start until the twenty-fourth. It's got a couple weeks.
When's the next meeting though?
The twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Next meeting is the twenty-fourth? Oh.
So we have to prove it today?
We have to approve to have a public hearing.
To have a public hearing? Okay.
And then we'll.
Again, this is just one family so far, um, they could just delay their payment until it's decided. I have told her that we're in the process of figuring it out, so she knows to wait, um, but.
Does RSB Children's cover swim lessons, whether that's considered camp or?
That's a great question. I don't think it would, but, I don't know.
I doubt it.
So do we need a motion then?
We, I mean, I guess we as a board need to decide if this is something we wanna do and if it is, then we have a public hearing. I don't have a problem with this.
I don't have a problem with doing this, I'm just, uh.
Seven days?
Have to give seven days, yeah.
Given all the other things.
If you wanted a special meeting, I can make it happen.
Do you want us to try to fit in a special public hearing or are you okay with waiting till the twenty-third?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine waiting, till the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yep.
So we'll schedule a public hearing for the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
In our next meeting?
Yep.
With these amounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with the amounts.
One forty for one, a hundred for two, and eighty-five for more than two?
And I just kind of like, off the top of my head, kinda thought about that.
Is it comparable?
I guess it would be like three or more, would stay with eighty-five, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go any lower than that.
So Jake's had a lot then?
Right, yes.
I can say it's not here.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, and there's not much room for comparison, I don't think, because most of the places around here that do swimming lessons are private entities if there are any, and I I think purity might be the only one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Basically, first child would be one forty, second child would be a hu- a hundred, third child would be eighty-five.
So, I was thinking a hundred and forty per child.
Yep.
A hundred dollars each child, so, two, right.
Yep.
That's going from a one forty, like, so like the sec- effectively, it's buy one, get one, sixty dollars.
Correct.
Yep.
So it's, the, the price is going from a hundred and forty to sixty for that second child.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Okay, that's not how I thought about it. I thought about a hundred dollars each child. So like, my children, I have two, I'd pay two hundred for both, right, yeah.
That's fine. If you got three, it goes down to eighty-five with the child.
Eighty-five each, yeah.
'Cause it would be, normally it would be two eighty, so you're getting an eighty dollar discount for a second kid.
Families, yeah.
I mean, unless you guys can, I'd hate to put it on you, but if you could think of a better amount that you would prefer.
I don't think it's unreasonable. And we're really just testing the waters, this is our first time trying to figure it all out, so.
So to speak.
Second year, right, yep. And I feel like we could, it's, it's, there's totally room for growth. We could add another instructor, I have people that wanna get certified, more towns we could get involved with. So.
Yep.
This is just a base and we could always go up.
I don't have a problem with these figures unless you guys do and if, if we deem it doesn't work out this way this year, then we adjust it next year before we do it again.
Right.
This will be the first year with private, no, not private, but outside of summer camp swim lessons 'cause last year was inside summer camp only, wasn't it?
Nope, nope, we did this last year too.
Did we?
It was a hundred and forty, yep.
My memory is showing already.
Across the board, last year.
Okay.
How many families turned away 'cause of that, do you know? I'd much rather see your kids by night swim than get priced out of it, that's me.
We had a bunch of, we had a bunch of community members just making donations.
Okay.
Yeah, it was nice. So that helped.
I don't recall doing it, am I losing it?
Yeah, we had multiple, at least three, I think.
Yep, good.
Three anonymous donors.
So, I understand that it's a hundred and forty, which we already have for the first child.
Right.
A hundred dollar per child if you have
Two.
more than one kid and eighty-five dollars per child.
If you have more than two.
That's how I, yes.
Three and a, basically.
So if you have three kids, eighty-five apiece.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Could, just for clarity's sake, could we say a hundred and forty dollars for
One.
one child, two hundred dollars for two children? And then say whatever eighty-five is times three, or is, you know?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five.
Enough.
For three.
And it goes up from there.
Plus.
Right, 'cause it would be eighty-five each child if you have five kids.
If you've got five kids, it's five times eighty-five.
Right, exactly, right.
Alright, alright, I can, I understand at least enough to get it in the paper the right way, okay.
You've got five kids, you need a swimming hobby.
Right. But yeah, right now, there's about eight separate summer camp, you know, non-summer camp families signed up so far. And we still have another week left.
Well, I know that you have a softball game to get to.
I do.
So, if you guys don't mind, before we jump to all business, now that that's over with, there is one thing that I'd like to discuss about Heather. And that is that, my understanding that you have a key to the building?
Oh, yeah.
She has a key signed out to the building?
I do, okay.
Yeah, because you can, the butt, the downstairs key that got you.
Well, we can figure that part out, you have a key.
Okay.
My problem is she doesn't have an alarm code. Because her office is down here and it's not necessary.
And I didn't want it at the time, I was like, no, no, I don't want, I don't need that responsibility.
Regardless of whether she wants it now, I want her to have it, because I have to let her in every time she needs to get upstairs to get anything out.
Got you. Okay.
So if
Yeah.
That's hard, right?
If this board is okay with it, I would like for her to have one so that she can gain access to all of our equipment when we're not around.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Can we get Adam put on the emergency call list? That's fine. You sure, pray. I'll take that, I'll take it.
Do you get first call or is it still your first call?
Sure, I'll take first call.
First call.
Uh, was that it?
I think so.
Alright.
I, I'll, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
So stop calling me. Alright, so does this CIP committee appointments, did we have anybody else from?
No public is jumped on board.
Well, until we have somebody from the public jump on board, we're not gonna have a full committee anyway.
We need two people.
You need two.
Right, we need at least one to have a quorum, right? With a
Planning board.
Shall include at least one member of the planning board, one member of the advisory selectmen and two registered voters. So I don't know if you can even have a committee unless you have that.
Right. Well, on the bright side, planning board would like Tia Gagnon to be on that committee as far as their representative goes. The only question was, she is not a full member, she's an alternate, but she's the only one that offered. So I said I would bring it here. Um, everybody else said no.
In terms of the RSA, or would Cordell have any guidance on whether or not it has to be? 'Cause I'm fine with it, just as long as we're not busting an RSA.
I can check, yeah.
Just double check, I don't, I mean, I'm, kinda have to be fine with it, she's the only one that said she'd do it, everybody else said no.
Well, you don't have one.
So I'll ask him if, if it's, if it's not all these people, can they still act as a CIP?
Right, as long as they have a quorum and can it be an alternate as opposed to a full member, as far as the planning board goes.
Yeah, can there be alternate members? Same thing, I suppose, with the advisory budget committee, if an alternate member wanted to be part of it as opposed to a full-time member.
And can you be a committee without everybody?
Yeah, that would be the question, I guess. I mean, I'm sure we still have to have a quorum, but can they meet without having all the members?
Sure, find out.
So you have to have at least three, so you have to have at least three people to make a quorum, right, regardless of who they are.
Alright. Stripe on East Madison Road. Let me see if I don't remember how this.
Maureen came into public comment and was asking about having a stripe on the road. Um, Josh got a price. Um, I was reminded that this had come to town meeting years before. And it was defeated, yeah, to do it.
Yeah, that was in two thousand two.
As a regular on East Madison Road, um, there are parts of it that are really narrow.
It's now four thousand dollars more than it was in two thousand two.
And the gate's got more quality.
Yeah, the only question I have, first off, East Madison Road isn't wide enough, it's not a
Right.
It's a difficult road. And I can see the need for a line, but this is a W line. Why not a single? Is there a reason?
Uh, I, I know that Josh had said that for them to come out and do a single line for pennies on the dollar, they do double line. They get a, it's, there's really
Same price.
Yeah, it's basically the same price, but I don't know the reason.
It's, I'm just thinking about the, the width of the road, putting a double line in some sections of that, you're not even, you know, you gotta be on the line all the time.
I like the idea of a line because
Oh, yes.
Yeah, definitely, um, obviously safer.
Well, it's a guide at night, it's, 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 it's good.
If anything, I would almost more want them on the edges of the road, so you know where that, the edges are, but, um, yeah, down the middle makes sense. Yeah, I would say just one, like, I don't think it's wide enough for double, um.
I'm not gonna say that I'm opposed to the line because that's not the case, but being that it was voted down at town meeting, I think it needs to go back.
That's what I was gonna say, bring it back, go to the next one.
Well, it wasn't, it was voted the God, that was twenty-three years ago, um.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, it's been a minute.
It was defeated at town meeting, which is our legislative body. And I think that being the case, it makes a, a lot more sense morally and ethically to, to have it go back there. Than for us to make that determination after they said no.
Whatever the criteria are to
Can you, can you review the history of how this got here? Was it, is there, is there a safety issue?
Normine Downs was here at and in public comment, came, yes, and had mentioned that it
Just to keep people trying to, keep them on their side. And see, right.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to it at all, I just in my opinion, I'd rather see it go back to town meeting and if that's the case, we'll paint it next summer. I know it's, so it's to wait for people to want it, but.
Chief here. Do you think it's a safety issue?
It could be, I mean, if folks are noticing that cars are on their side of the road, it could be, you know, I know a lot of people are trying to avoid the, the conditions of the road a lot of times, go around it, especially where Dragon Pond is.
Yep.
It's challenging. Helps us affect arrests if we find someone who's impaired and they're on the wrong side of the road arguing that, you know, the yellow line violations, but we can get around that.
It's gonna be pretty hard to drive the road with a, with a, not, having a yellow line.
So, East Madison Road is, sorry, are you done? Rick though, you done, okay, I know, I wanna talk to you. Um, so East Madison Road is set to be paved, like repaved, not ne- next, is, they were on the, the list to be repaved, was it next year? Or were they after that? On the priority road list?
I don't think it's that soon.
So I don't wanna, do we stripe it and then stripe it again, do you know what I mean? Like, we also don't wanna necessarily pay to do it twice?
Well, I feel like you're gonna kinda have to do it every year anyway.
Oh, okay.
I'm thinking, wouldn't you have?
That's what they do.
Just to, give a look, start to look.
Okay, that's be done every year anyway.
I, I, I'm assuming, I don't know.
Traffic flowing and all that, just
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess are we in agreement on taking it to town meeting?
If that follows whatever our criteria protocol is for warrant articles, yeah.
Sounds like that's what we'll do then.
Yes.
I'll make a note to put on the line.
Alright, Conway Branch Rail Trail Advocates Group Member, opponent. The pool just keeps getting bigger.
So this is that official request for a selectman and a person from the public to join the the, the group over for, from the state. Think in here is the list of dates of the meeting.
I see the first meeting, that's what I was just gonna ask, is there
I saw, oh. I did see a list and there was, um, I wanna say the meetings went for a, a year and a month, it might have been thirteen meetings. And I know they mentioned somewhere in that area. Where did I read that? It was definitely twelve meetings for sure. One per month.
So they're looking for two members of the public and a member of this board, is my understanding?
I must not have printed the email that she sent me.
No, who's that, meeting that Thursday, the nineteenth?
Yeah.
No, I'm lost, because that's the way I understood it before, but I don't see anything in here about how many members or where they wanna throw.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure it was one selectman and one resident. I know it is, it was two, there was definitely two people from Madison, one selectman and one resident.
Okay.
I'll go to the meeting on the nineteenth.
Sounds like Rick just took it. That was easy. So, a member from the public.
On the calendar.
Do we have any interest? Tia Gagnon is interested in being our member of the public? When people fall on the tier, I tend to shy away from saying no. So.
Alright.
Do you wanna motion on that, or are you good?
Uh, it's, I
It's a technical appointment, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion, um, to appoint Rick as our selectmen's rep and Tia Gagnon as the member of the public representing Madison.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, PFAS additional testing sites, I'm assuming this is you doing?
Well, no, it's kinda me, well, a couple of mu- meetings ago, I came to you guys and said that they were doing additional testing and you wanted to kinda have the scope of what was going on and so, this was kinda like the scope, but you might have more information.
Yeah, so it sounds like, um, a letter went out to residents from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services um, to, in response to, to notify them of, um, exceedances, New Hampshire, exceedances of the New Hampshire Ambient Groundwater Quality Standards of PFAS, um, and they called it five hundred foot of butters, is who they sent it out to. So, they did, they sent it out to a massive list of people and it is in response to our December data transmo that we sent with all of the properties that we've tested, um, in dis- in the fall, and we sent the final report in December. So, May seventh is when DES sent out letters, and it's a different department, it's a different group. And it seems like they just, you know, I spoke with Um, and it seems like they just, you know, I spoke with Will Cox and Barton, and, um. DES just kind of used some tool to kind of estimate what five hundred feet was, or their criteria for five hundred feet were very broad. Um, Linda was kind enough to point out a map, um, to show that properties as far up as Wings Road received the letter. Um, so I spoke with Will Cox and Barton, like I said, and, um. You know, folks just basically got the notification about that property, about this, and, um, I know one of the recipients contacted the state. To kinda ask more information, and the state offered to test them. Because they weren't in the original scope of what the state told us we needed to test. Um, so the state tested them, um, and I think they're awaiting, I think they're waiting. So folks who received this letter, the long list of folks who received this letter, do have the opportunity, that if they have not been contacted by us and Will Cox and Barton. Um, for us to test them, they do have the opportunity to contact the state, um, to have the water tested. Um, so we're doing the spring testing, we still have two more properties. That, um, we are able to get, we were able to get a hold of, um, to test them. Um, as part of our spring sampling, they're the last two, um, they're looking to sample them probably Friday. So we're holding off on submitting our spring data until we have those results back. Um, so, if these properties that extended out with, and there were four properties that we were never able to get a hold of. Um, but if there were properties in this, well, we extended out five feet and added a couple because they were five hundred feet. From a residential property that had exceedances. Um, so in this next round, as there were more, presumably DES will tell us now, these new exceedances. Go up five hundred feet from them. So that's our scope, that DES tells us, is kinda to keep expanding it very specifically and targeted around properties that do have exceedances. Yeah, and there were some properties that had, um, fluctuations that we're looking into. Um, like some numbers went way up, some numbers went way down, so, um. Will Cox and Barton were trying to figure out, do, when they come out on Friday. Probably want to air, I want the board's blessing to air on the side of caution, and retest some of those that had significant fluctuations. Um, in there from results, like I said, some had a significant jump up in the exceedance number, in the number of parts per trillion, and then. Um, some had a significant jump down. So, um, I think there were four properties, um, that we'd just like to retest, just to have another data point. If I have, it's, it would be covered under, um. I think it'd be covered under the work order, but I would like permission to add those properties to retest on Friday, if we can get a hold of the property owners in time.
Sure.
Yeah, crazy enough, too.
Yep, so anybody on the. You can see Linda, yeah, printed out this nice map, showing everybody that she circled in red, um, received that notification. And she was kind enough to print out the map, um, of Will Cox and Barton that shows properties that we have tested.
I brought them.
Huh?
I think I brought them.
Oh.
I think I did, did it at the last second. They're on the counter.
Anyway, you can see like this, so the scope of the Will Cox and Barton testing is like this, you know, kind of right where she's. And folks, as, for her, is here, got a letter. So. So anyway, so folks who received a letter. Um, can either. Wait for this next data submittal, um. And wait for us to determine the next round that the town will test, but, or they can absolutely contact the state, um, to see if they can get tested by the state sooner.
Okay.
I have a couple of things about this. Are we, are we doing, have we done anything about notifying employees of taking the test, you can do that, we need to do that. And I'm not sure how that's gonna unfold, but I think we need to develop some kind of a. Letter to employees. And let the department heads determine who those people are. And then figure out, where can we get the money to pay for it? We've got a lot of employees that have been exposed. But we're dealing with it as a general public health issue, we have some very specific, um, potential issues.
I don't think, I, I don't think we have, as a board, have decided any way, which way, as far as testing employees.
Correct. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, it's, we still don't know where this came from, and I still have a hard time bearing down on the fact that this burden is coming down on the town. Especially considering not knowing where it came from, not to mention the fact that regardless of where this money comes from, it's still coming out of taxpayer pocket.
Correct, but also understand, we, it doesn't matter where it came from, we have employees who've been exposed. In some cases, the pretty vast amounts of this stuff.
In what manner, though? That's, that's my question, and I. To best of my knowledge, nobody at this, this town hall was drinking water, or the DPW.
Library. For sure.
A library.
So what?
Firefighters have been exposed to it, uh. I'm not sure they were drinking water, but they're exposed to it in terms of, uh, absorption, inhalation, working with it, washing trucks. Doing those sorts of things, so they've been exposed. This is something that doesn't go away. So I, I think we did, I think, we really need to think about. I've had discussions with others about this, um, and the question is how far back do you go? Well. I think Mike can tell you, we can go back in the thirties probably, uh, we really don't know whether stuff came when, the fifties, right, fifties and sixties.
Well, we don't even know if it came from the phone. We still don't have a definitive source of this problem, I mean, this, this problem could have come from anywhere, and somehow the burden's landing here.
Well, it's gonna land on us because it's, it's municipal, water.
Right.
The documentation that's gone back and forth between the DES and the town for years. Has established or concurs or whatever.
They have made an assumption that it came from the phone, and I'm not saying it didn't, um, no one can say that it did. Regardless, and I, I understand the library was consuming the water, but where do we draw the line? How far back do we go?
Well, we start there then, why don't we start with, yeah, start with the library employees.
And what are we offering?
Um, to, if their health insurance doesn't cover testing.
What is this test? That's my question, because we have no definitive idea of what, is it a blood test that says that, yes, this isn't your blood, or?
Yes, it is a blood test. It is a blood test that tests the PFAS levels and compares it to other samples.
Okay. So we need a price on how much this blood test costs. On paper, before we can start offering it, so we know what we're getting ourselves into, not to say we're not gonna do it, but we need to know what we're doing.
I will contact Quest Diagnostics.
And who is Quest Diagnostics?
They're a lab that's right at the Saco River Walk-in.
Okay. Alright.
I have one more thing.
Yep.
How much time do you put into this, by the way? Seems like it's, uh, becoming a full-time job. Significant amount of time.
Yep.
This is a, this is a situation, it's not gonna go away, it's gonna be with us for a long time. And we need to stop thinking about how we're gonna move this to an administrative function of some type, somehow. Either the Director of Public Works, somebody is going to have to pick up this ball to keep it going. Something we need to start thinking about. Just throwing it out there.
Well, you're, you are right.
She should not have to be a surrogate.
You are correct, somebody in this building had this ball. Completely, and a paid employee, elected official, had this ball, somebody was here full-time.
What's that?
Michael Brooks had this ball originally, it was with somebody that was here full-time.
The, the thing that you understand, of the grants and the monies that are being accumulated in this process, cover the cost of administration. So, we can get the money back, we can get the money back for her time, but she can't collect any money. She's a slop. So, we need to find a way to, um, and, 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 God bless Joy, she. She's not gonna be here for the next fifteen years, and this thing's not gonna go away.
I know John was here for twenty-four.
You can't refuse.
God bless him.
John set a precedent, we all gotta be here that long now.
There you go.
But I mean, if Joy does leave, and this isn't her realm anymore, I, unless Michael has an objection, I think the ball goes right back to where it came from.
And how did you get that?
Do you have the capacity to deal with it?
I know. How'd you get it?
Well, combination of, of being on the fire department and emergency management. Didn't know where else to go with it. And we have talked about it being a health and code issue, but we all know that Bob Boyd doesn't have the capacity to handle it with his current workload. I mean, and I don't know what your day-to-day workload looks like, but you seem to be doing well with it when you had it, and I think it'll flow right back there, should.
Is there something you wanna take back?
I don't mind doing it.
Good. It's just something we have, people bear.
Yeah. I mean, I, no, I don't mind, I, I, I want to do it, no, I know, I just, I.
I appreciate what you do, you do your job, but, again.
I get the, the idea, so, so I can come and go, well, I guess, if anybody ever ran against you, I guess you could go too.
You could be coming, yeah, anybody could. That's all I got.
Okay. Joy, anything on your list, other than all that?
Um, so we kinda covered some of it already, um, fo- multiple folks have reached out and asked about the docket for the league. And when is it gonna go out?
It's a good question.
Yeah.
Dock or the raft?
Raft, sorry, the raft, yeah.
It's the raft, yeah.
Everybody calls it the dock, and I always correct them, so it's funny, but I'm like, yeah, I call it the dock. The raft.
Might be able to help you with that, actually.
Yeah?
Uh, we're in the process of getting the boat, uh, ready for water, so I suspect once the boat's in the water, the raft will be in not too long after.
I think it is ready, I saw it on the highway thing, that they've got it up and going, dewing and rising. It's got a new impeller, so, you're good to go.
The boat?
The boat. I saw it in the highway minutes there.
I'm sure they've heard it already, but maybe you just mentioned it to DPW and see what they can do.
I did it Saturday, so it just got done.
Still cold.
Well, the kids were, the elementary school kids were in the water all day yesterday down in Scarborough, my goodness.
Can't be that warm.
They said some kids just were not getting out of the water, mine included. Alright, um. Um, yeah, I think those were my. Those for tonight.
Perfect.
I'm good.
Rick?
I'm set.
You're all set?
I got a note from already.
Um.
Oh, I just thought. Um, folks are asking me about the cable contract. Uh, the stat, cause I'm, sorry, I've been on loop for quite a while, but didn't know where that, where's that landed, is that?
We are still waiting.
For the revisions.
Revisions we made at the last meeting to go back to charter, and then come back to us, at best of my knowledge, we haven't heard, right?
Right, the only thing that we've heard is that she did have a couple of questions that I reached out to, um. Uh, the Mad TV to make sure that she understood what they were looking for, and then it was going back to charter.
Okay.
So it's, it's still being in the massage between the two places.
And then, um, a specific question that came up was if Mad TV does move from the DPW garage to downstairs in the library. It's not in the contract for the library to have cable, no, we don't.
We, with that, we were adding that.
That got added in, okay.
But I don't think that they like that.
Oh, perfect.
They didn't like that one on there.
Okay.
So, but like I said, it's still being, it's still going back and forth, but I think the last revision said they, they would only give us what we already had for cable connections.
Didn't they, did the library use to have a cable connection there?
I don't know.
I would want to say we did.
I think that was the thought last time, but nobody could remember for sure when or why it stopped.
Yeah, right.
So we'll have to wait and see what they come back with.
Okay, and I guess confirm with Mad TV if they could still be there, if they don't have the cable connection.
Wanna say that was part of the, that last question, that Kate was making sure she understood it, but I'll double check it.
Okay.
I don't remember where we had cable, but there was one that we didn't need it, and maybe that's, we can move one of the ones we didn't want.
Cause they won't need it in the lower DPW garage once Mad TV is out, right? They have it in the upper garage.
TV, right.
Cable, yeah. So if they don't need it at the lower garage.
Do we have TV at the lower garage, though?
I'd have to go, the contract's on my desk, I'd have to go back and look.
Well, that would be what Mad TV is using now.
Yeah.
But they're using the internet, I don't know they're using TV. Thought they were, do you know?
Yeah, if you have cable TV.
I would turn it on every day and check that it's working.
The TV?
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe if, once they move, they just move the service from there to the library, as opposed to having it down there. I'm sure that's something we can work out.
Okay.
Right. My list, actually, I meant to ask you this earlier, Linda, can you get me the numbers for what we paid for? Ballfield material from Burke last year. Like I told you guys this last time, we were short on material, roughly two hundred yards short, cause we went deeper than we had expected on this lower field. The quote from Burke to get what I need for material to do the upper field is seven thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Which will come out of our maintenance fund if we do it. Was hoping Jake was gonna be here tonight, saw he's gonna play off game, he's getting me a quote from somebody else. For the same materials, so we can see what it looks like, but I'd also like to look at the numbers from last year. And just compare what we paid last year. Um, looking into other options, we screened it here last year, that may be an option, this quote from Burke is him screening it. So. I'm still looking, but we are going to have to spend a little bit more money on material up there. My guess is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to eight thousand dollars for. Material to fix that upper field.
Alright, and then, um. Um, I know the, um, that Casella Organic Super Pete is in the running. But we just wanna consider whether or not we would want to use that up there.
I did ask Josh to reach out to, is it True Green, is that the name of that place? Real Green, True Green, something like that. I did ask Josh to reach back out to them about a contract for this year to keep up with maintenance, whether it be the organics or whatever we do. But the fields look great, and I don't wanna lose them, so. Have Josh, if he can, maybe come to the next meeting, or at least give us an update on maintenance on. The grass to keep them, keep the fields looking good.
I think that was separate. The True Green contract, I think, was separate.
It's, yeah, it's possible. Uh, well, I think True Green may have been the ones to spread it, unless we spread it ourselves, but either way. I'd like to continue the maintenance on those fields. That was it for me. Linda?
Nope, I'll sit thinking.
Chief?
Uh, just a little bit more on the boat, um, we're gonna put it in at the, uh, boat ramp dock. Uh, that way it's a little bit, uh, more easily accessible to us and the fire department EMS services if they need to. Rather than a private dock around the corner with limited parking, um, so that'll be out there shortly, um. We're gonna start, uh, kinda being sticklers for parking, uh, down at the beaches, now that it's getting warmer, um, as well as the boat ramp. Activities, we've been very busy lately, um. And part of that, I'll, I, I don't wanna lay blame on anybody from any department, um. I would ask, uh, if there's a way for department heads or committees that are intertwined to some degree. Uh, if they are gonna coordinate with, um, the police department or the fire department. Uh, to get emergency services in place for details or whatever, uh, that they, um. Respond directly with myself, um, not any. Um, not any one of the other staff, cause sometimes it gets mixed up in the wash. Just the communication, um, isn't always there, so I know I've already talked with, uh, the fire chief on it, but. Uh, it should come directly to, to us so that we can be there and available. We did have an event at the road race which could have probably been, um, avoided. Um, nobody was hurt, no one did anything wrong, but I think just the police presence, um, would have thwarted this person's attitude. Uh, to the event, so that's all. Otherwise it, it went off without a hitch, it looked like, so. Uh, but that's all I have.
Um, we're just gearing up for summer reading. Um, I wanna say thank you to the D B, D P W, cause they were fabulous about. Digging a trench and then filling it back in for the generator. I received a second grant for ten thousand dollars for working on the doors, so that's twenty thousand dollars. So I'm hoping that I won't have to, um, access any of the warrant article money that we put up. I, with the Mad TV possibly coming downstairs to the library, there's gonna be things that need to be done. But one thing I think should be considered is a second exit down there. We only have that one exit in the parking lot side of the building. That would prohibit them from using the downstairs during programming, any programming. But just as a safety issue, there's not a second exit. So, I'm gonna look into possible grant money that we can get to do that, but, um, I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar.
Thank you.
Tax collection, uh, the bills went out with a due date of July tenth and. To, as of close of business today, we've collected just eighteen point zero two percent, so. Kinda meaningless other than to demonstrate that the money's flowing in, almost, almost a million dollars in a week and a half, so. I think Linda would tell me if we had a problem with cash flow, but I think it's good. And so on that. So tax collection is going, um, in your packets. I provided you with the, uh, delinquent lists for the twenty twenty-two unpaid lien taxes. Which will be subject to deeding in August. And I also provided a copy of that same list to the code enforcement, because typically. He would take a look at that list physically, look at the property and advise this board. If there are situations with the property that would. In accordance with the statute, would make you decide you did not wanna take ownership of it. Be it some kind of environmental condition or, or, or something, uh, the statute's very specific. And so. He's gonna take a look at those properties and. I would assume Jenner would probably come and present his findings to you. But again, that's not coming up until August nineteenth is the deeding date this year. On the fire department side, um. We held a very successful, uh, drive-through spaghetti dinner on May thirty-first to benefit. Um, Ellen King, most affectionately known as Pork, in his fight against cancer. And I don't really wanna broadcast, uh, we raised, uh, in excess of thirteen thousand dollars. Mostly, frankly, mostly donations, cause we only served two hundred and seventy-five meals. But I think more people than that went through and just get donated money, whatever they wanted to. We had some gift cards and that type of thing too. But it was very successful and.
speaks volumes to this community.
It really does, and we drew from, I mean, of course. If, if there's a person in this valley that doesn't know who he is, they haven't been here very long. He's kind of a fixture and just his personality, I think. I mean, there were people from as far away as Bartlett. That came down specifically. Some not even to eat, they just made a donation and then went home, so. It is, it was great to see the turnout, even, and it was, uh, at, at times it was absolutely boring. But, uh, the mechanism using this church, uh, the, the school kitchen, it worked, it worked pretty good. I, I, I think it, it worked really good. You just can't help it, we're not professional restaurateurs. I mean, I can't say people didn't wait a little while, and I was told that traffic was backed up almost to Madison Corner at one point, but. We could only go as fast as we could. But I think it weren't pretty good, and we didn't waste anything. What little bit of unserved food that we had, the Brown Church was able to utilize for the dinner bell, so.
My understanding was all the food, everything was donated, but a few containers had to be purchased.
Yeah, the only thing out of pocket, um, was the to-go containers and my wife and I purchased them and, as a. Donation, so to speak, so we didn't have anything out of pocket. Every, every dime that came into our hands went directly to Ellen. And I'm still getting, I've had a few hundred dollars come in this week. Came in the mail. If anybody would like to continue to donate, you can feel free to drop off whatever you'd like to donate right here to me at Town Hall, and I'll handle the route. And we'll keep helping him as long as we can keep helping him.
Yeah, just remind me, we also have a grand opening of the new food pantry Saturday, eleven o'clock.
Yes. There's a lot going on Saturday. It's Flag Day, there's a ceremony at the Legion. It's high school graduation at Cannon.
I think it's Bike Week starts.
And it's gonna rain.
And we're gonna need Father's Day on Sunday.
That's all I have. Thank you for reminding me, Rick. Is there anybody from this board looking to attend?
I'm gonna be there.
The food pantry?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll be there too.
Yeah, I can't be there, otherwise I would, but it's my understanding that, uh, one of our fantastic interior senators will be present. You can maybe mention the, the FEMA issue that we're having and maybe see if we can get ten minutes of her time after her fame with the. Uh, Hassan. I don't, I don't know if you guys have seen this, but.
That's our denial letter?
It is the denial letter.
Is this the one you talked about? This is the one going back in?
Yes. But there's now two of them. I, I, I mentioned it to Adam, I.
They couldn't just say no, right?
Good Lord willing and the creed.
Fifty pages of no.
Right. Um, I'm, I'm, I'll be there on Saturday and I talked to, uh, Joe Dame. When I helped him move all the food. I didn't wanna upstage his event, but I asked him to reach out to her separately. If she could give me a little bit of time after the. I don't wanna jump her in the middle of their ceremony, but while she's in town before she left town, if I could have ten minutes of her time.
Explain those letters, yeah.
Just like to. Give her a copy of these denials that we've got and seek any assistance that her office may be able to provide, because. Despite my request, there is nobody at the state that will.
Do that.
Help us. They will be a conduit for the federal money to come to us, but there's nobody to help me with the process. And I can't, it's frustrating. When we had a disaster that occurred in December, December eighteenth of twenty-three. And nobody came out here to assess the damages until May of twenty twenty-four. It had been damaged three other times subsequent to their visit. And then to basically use the photographic evidence that I provided. As a reason for denying us.
It's a joke, if you ask me, but like you said, we don't wanna hijack the food pantry and what they're doing. It's a great thing, but it's not. Often that we get an opportunity to. Well, I just, yeah, actually have words with a senator.
I always prefer to communicate, especially on important matters face to face. It's the only way to make sure somebody's paying attention to you.
Alright, sing the trinkets.
Actually, real quick, um, two things, um, D P W report, apparently Sunday, May twenty-fifth, we need to wash. Which D P W Director Josh Schacron, a fifty, a happy fiftieth. We all read our report. Um, and then that just jogged my memory about, um, Pound Road. A couple of folks have asked me about Pound Road. Cause I guess they were estimating that like thirty trees would have to be removed, and folks are saying it's a bit of a.
They were between eighty-five and ninety-six.
I don't remember the estimated number of trees, but.
Where on, um, towards Mooney?
Four people counted in the council between ninety-six and eighty-five.
My estimate is that they removed what they had to to accomplish what we were looking to accomplish, and I can't imagine they're not just out there dropping because they wanted to chop.
No, I just didn't know if we had like. I don't know, the discrepancy, like what, what were their thoughts on what changed, or did, was it just? I don't know, they just had any information or explanation.
I, I just think it's an indication that people listen to what happens and they follow up on it, so.
You can find out why.
That's a good thing.
The veterans' credits that are in there are redos of ones that people have had from the past. Um, just over the last few weeks, we sent out about a hundred and thirty-ish letters to all the veterans in town. Cause we have to, every five years with the revow, we have to confirm that all those people are still eligible and have them sign a paper saying that they. Can, they still live here in town and that they can, they're eligible for the credit, and when we went through the revow, like, um, that review. I did find a few people who needed to have theirs either tweaked because, um, the veteran had passed away, so the spouse was the one who was eligible now. Or they put their property in a trust, so they needed to have a special form, so that's why a few of these will be trickling through lately.
The, um, the Dell, with the Dell, um, computer thing, that's, that's, that's a, a full server, like that would go in a closet.
Right, the one that's, all the computers are attached to here in town, yeah, that, that's what this, and it's been, I wanna say five years since we replaced that. Was up on the schedule for this year, and, um, the other computer was Kate's tower. Kate and I were both supposed to have towers this year, but if you recall, mine died at the end of last year, so we did that last year, so it's just those two.
I'm gonna let the rest of you sign that one.
Denial. What's the yellow one for?
There's another signature at the top of the page, top right side.
Yeah, I missed it too. Oh, you missed it too.
It was me, the star.
Yeah, I looked at the bottom one there.
I feel like I put it on the other side, I missed it. At least it.
And that was the last intent to cut for twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. All done with those intents, we start the whole new year.
That's a good price on the desktop, I think.
Uh, both were pretty decent. It was actually less than my computer.
Yeah.
Yeah, by about a hundred bucks, but still, it was less.
Hundred bucks, hundred bucks.
Same computer, just six months later, so.
Where'd you get it through?
Dell, um.
Oh, you went right through to.
Well, that's who, um, Northledge just prices them out at Dell for us, so, yeah. I can get you the quote if you want.
That would be great, thank you. I think when they reported us the laptop, it was. We're gonna stick our shock over the laptop. Thank you for finding that spirit.
While Joy is signing, I'm gonna start reciting the Bible over here on my motion banter non-public session. For RSA ninety-one, A, hole in three, Roman numeral two, little B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. To be followed by a non-public session for RSA ninety-one, A, hole in three, Roman numeral two, little E. Consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation which has been threatened and running or filed by or against the public body. Or any subdivision thereof, or by or against any member thereof because of his or her membership in such public body. Until the claim or litigation has been fully adjudicated or otherwise settled. Any application filed for tax evasion pursuant to law with any body or board shall be. Shall not constitute a threat nor file litigation against any public body for the purposes of this sub-paragraph. Second by Rick and a roll call vote.
Joy, I.
Jim, I.
Adam, I.